Tony Graham here with the Harrison County Jail. Give our inattention, that might be him. Okay, then we'll ask Senator Roger Jones, would you?
Sure. Everybody bow to his, I'm sorry. To have a father, we'd like to thank you for listening to me this morning. That's that you get the five board members the understanding and the knowledge to make the best decisions while consistent with. We're very thankful that we were able to make it today. And we ask that after the meeting, we all be able to leave and go home and be safe. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got a couple of changes to the agenda. On item number one, Ms. Hancock is ill and is requested to be moved to the December 6th. Meeting agenda, so if we can do that. Now, is Jordan Hartshorn here?
Right here.
Good to see you, Jordan, come on that table, got you. Maybe.
I think I state my address on there. Okay, Jordan Hartshorn, address is 1224 29th Street, G25, Gulfport, Mississippi, 39501. I've actually been talking to Ms. Beverly Martin. I actually started an organization called Mississippi Disaster and Conservation Corps right after Zeta. I was working with the Gulf Coast Community Foundation as the disaster volunteer coordinator slash donation manager. Worked with Matt and Rupert and we had a problem with volunteers due to COVID. I mean, and it was like 30 storms, you asked for assistance, most of them were like $50,000 to come. It would cost the board, the county, for a group to come in and help us with tarping, with mucking, helping seniors out. So what I did is I went to the board, went to the foundation forward first and said, hey, look, I want to create this program. They were gonna, it was gonna be underneath the foundation. The foundation is in a direct service, so they said, Jordan, we trust you, you go out and do it yourself. So I created a 501(c)(3) nonprofit called Mississippi Disaster and Conservation Corps. What we're gonna be doing is recruiting volunteers that actually will be able to assist in our county throughout the state. It's the first disaster corps in the state history per volunteer Mississippi MEMA and the governor's office. Our first thing we're gonna be doing is SERP teams. I'm working with Matt right now, Stratton Director of Merx Management, to create this program, especially the SERP, to assist with call, you know, the phone calls that come into the EOC. Going to visit seniors, like if we need to go in there and there's a tree, we can remove the tree and some other things we're doing. We, I mean, this is a great program and that's what I'm here today. I know the group is sorry, I don't know why. Talk all day. I sent a letter to Supervisor Martin about requesting a county building or a facility that we can house our headquarters in. I don't, I think she received it. That was one reason I was coming to talk to. We're gonna be working with the beautification commission, doing community cleanups. We're gonna make sure we have volunteers for that, because we have two parts. Let me pull my phone out, I know our mission, but I want to make sure I'm saying it right. Our mission is to...
Is this, is this people from Mississippi going to other states and volunteering? Or is this just inside Mississippi?
This is, we will eventually, but our first goal is our state. And that we actually want, we were gonna start, we were gonna make it a full state program, which it is. But our focus, our focus is right here, I live in Harrison County, I helped during Zeta. This is where I want to be, so our first pilot program is gonna be right here in Harrison County.
Is that gonna require FEMA numbers or FEMA numbers to do that, or not? Was that just doing a volunteer basis?
Just, just on a volunteer basis.
May I ask a question? Are there any certifications or anything that is gonna be needed, are gonna be needed?
So ma'am, Jordan's nonprofit is already looking into getting all the necessary insurance and all the other requirements met. We will partner with any volunteers who are interested in getting the SERP training. And that is just to help people make immediate need met to their families, their neighbors, in a disaster until first responders are able to arrive on scene.
So I guess our question is, you're looking for office space and a place to do the training. Now, the training, I think you could do in conjunction with Matt at the EOC. So you've got that covered. The office space, we're gonna have to look into that.
Okay.
How big are you looking for?
It doesn't have to be big. But right now, it's just the board, we're strictly volunteers. We don't, I'm actually like acting as the executive director right now. Part-time, I guess you want to say. We're, we're still in the beginning stage. We are hosting our, hopefully hosting our first SERP training, January 3rd, 4th, and 6th at the Scarlet Pearl. They have partnered with us, they donated $5,000 to go ahead and host this. Matt is actually gonna, Bruce is gonna be teaching it and stuff. So I've also took a lot of FEMA classes, the online studies, I did all the ones that Matt recommends, plus more. I'm going in December to Starkville. Actually, Matt is gonna talk about that on his own thing. But I'm actually going to become a train, the trainer, and it's called MYPI, which is the Mississippi Youth Prevent, uh, sorry, Mississippi Youth Preparation Initiative. And what it is, it's teen SERP, but what it does is, there's a component in it where they get CPR and AED training. And they also have this service project that they do, which is called Prep Plus 6. And what it is, is they go to their house, they prep their emergency plan, well then they are required to go to six other families and create their emergency plan. And they present it to us and then they go to certificate once they're complete program. It's like a 10-week course. So the more people prepared and having a plan, it would be more efficient for the county, you know, like...
So Tim, Mr. Hallman, on the training in conjunction with the EOC, that's something it can already do?
Yeah, I think once you, it's not gonna involve any money, it's just gonna be trained as volunteer.
It's gonna be using the EOC conference room in conjunction.
Yes, I think.
And then on the other thing, we're gonna have to see what we got. I'm sure we got something after.
If I may, we had a group that came down 35 times from New York and they, the Genesee College. And their school and their chamber paid for their trip and they mugged that houses and it was a volunteer group. And in, in that vein, I would suggest that schools and colleges and those things, yeah, reach out to those people and see if they would be interested to.
Yeah, we're actually working, Long Beach School District reached out and wants to do, they're, I guess they have a medic program. They're actually gonna want all their kids to go through the MYPI program to get SERP certified and be able to help the county out, which saves tax dollars, because every person that goes through this and actually is activated, their, their hours count for, I think it's $28.34 that you can use for a match. I went to Denim Springs during Ida, their SERP team was activated, it saved the city $25,000. So this, we're gonna keep track of that and submit it to the board every time it's a disaster in Mac, so that we can, if there is a grant out there that the county wants to use or we can use to help better, it'll be able to match that, that not federal match. On the beautification side is because we're applying for an AmeriCorps grant, and AmeriCorps does not let you do disaster 24/7, because there is no such thing besides the pandemic. So we're gonna do environmental stewardship, so we're gonna do coastal cleanups, try to do some parks, county parks go in there, paint things, you know, anything that the county really needs and other organizations, we want to make sure we're doing our part. But the main part why I did this, because we saw during, I saw Zeta, there was no help. Literally, I helped with the donations and, I mean, you couldn't get a volunteer to come help, so I sat there for like three or four, five days. You know, and it was kind of sad, but yeah, I think that was 30, I think it was 30 named storms that year. Everybody was wore out, but this is like the first time that we'll actually have a designated crew right here in Harrison County. And hopefully it stays, that we don't have to call for assistance and it saves tax dollar money, so.
Okay, we'll put our thinking hats on and see.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can we recognize Susan Kramer Jones, Executive Director of the Women's Resource Center in Gulfport, to discuss the center's operations and future plans?
Good morning, I'm Susan Kramer Jones and as of July this year, I've become the Executive Director of the Women's Resource Center in Gulfport. And I believe several of you have supported us in the past. But about a month ago, I had the opportunity to meet with Supervisor Powers, who's walking in the door right now. Hello, how are you? She came to our center and we walked around and kind of talked about everything that we do there. And she suggested that I come here and talk to all of you, because the grand majority of the women that we serve at the Women's Resource Center live in Harrison County. The things that we do, we've been a 501(c)(3) since, I think it was March of 2004. And over the past seven, 17 years, we have served thousands of women and families across the Mississippi Gulf Coast, predominantly in Harrison County. And the things that we do at the center is we have pregnancy testing, limited ultrasounds, pregnancy support, peer counseling, pregnancy law support, and education to ensure healthy pregnancies and healthy babies. So in every single service that we provide there is completely free and confidential. We do not take a, but we did not charge anyone for anything when they come through our door. And that's where I see how we can actually partner with Harrison County Board of Supervisors. I know that you have a lot of resources that we could potentially send our, the women who come, come to us, because there are so many different opportunities that they're just not aware of. But at each, at each year at Women's Resource Center, we serve at least 500 new women every year. And about 90% of those women live under the poverty line. About 90% of them are also minorities, 80% of them are single mothers, and about 2/3 of them have no formal education after high school. During their initial visit at the Women's Resource Center, we encourage them to enroll in the different services that we have there. One of the most critical components that we have is called the Earn While You Learn Program. And it is a program that is designed to have, we have in-person and online classes on all types of subjects, covering prenatal and parenting topics, proper nutrition, newborn care, safe sleep practices, postpartum expectations, financial literacy, and so much more. Through our classes, we are able to prepare mothers and fathers who really and truly find it extremely difficult financially to be able to even prepare for a baby. So during that time, what we do when they enroll in our classes, every week they come in, we start preparing them by giving them diapers, wipes, clothing, newborn clothing. We can even give them strollers and equipment, because that is, can be financially devastating for someone who doesn't have the resources. And as you probably all know, WIC and, and SNAP do not provide for diapers or wipes or anything. They're strictly nutritional programs. So everything, like I said, everything that we do is completely free for them. And COVID, just like Jordan was saying, has impacted us volunteer-wise as well as financially. I think our donations for the last two years have been down about 40%, but not one service have we stopped. We have not stopped providing for the women. We have, we have continued to have them come through our doors. And in fact, this path start, already this year, we've had 1,574 client visits. We've given away 23,964 diapers. We've performed 304 pregnancy tests and 84 ultrasounds. So in partnership with our community, we've been able to keep going. But we are really in need of some financial support. We do not really qualify for a lot of federal grants, because we do not refer out for abortions. And that kind of limits what, where our donations can come from. Supervisor Powers has graciously offered her support in the amount of $5,000. And I would like to ask all of you to please consider...
Why you say gosh?
I would like for all of you to please consider helping us as well. So that's why I'm here today. Do y'all have any questions about anything that we do, or?
I wanted to say, I don't know if you said who you are, she's Kramer Marine family, born and raised here. Rebecca Caden, sister from the city of Gulfport. You were in Georgia doing a lot of nonprofits on big levels, and we're happy to have you back in Gulfport. And Women's Resource Center was close to shutting its doors. They did not have a certain mission, there's some things that happened. So I just want to say that I'm thrilled that you're gonna head it up and...
And I have a huge passion for this and I have a lot of wonderful ideas. I've gone to see your wonderful new resource center and I really see us partnering together, you know, to help, help kind of bridge the gap. There's so many opportunities out there, but it's just really trying to bring them all together.
And it also prevents child abuse in my mind, you know, giving you more...
Because what we're trying to do is a lot of the people that come there don't really, haven't had the best of role models. And by having them through our doors, we are able to help talk to them and guide them on good ways to parent their children. So we start doing that from the time, you know, they might be four weeks pregnant when they walk through our door. If they enroll in our program and if they, you know, keep coming to us, we are able to kind of prepare them on healthy ways to be good parents.
Ms. Jones, we have some money that we can use to advertise county resources.
Okay.
So you probably need to actually send a letter.
Okay.
And then let us know how you could do that. It could be on your Facebook page, on your, somehow online or...
And I'm gonna tell you another thing that I, we do, anytime I go out and talk to anyone, I give out a little packet. And in that packet, for example, Choose Life, the tags, they have provided us a little, almost bookmark kind of thing. I give that out along with our information. And if, and we can do that as well. If there's anything that I could put in from Harrison County, I'd be happy to put in along with that packet. We also do have a Facebook page, we have an Instagram page, we have a website. And we would be happy to, you know, advertise as well, whatever it is that Harrison County has to offer.
So if you'll give me a letter and I make sure we get it on, straight on the board. Agenda for, I guess, for next month.
Okay.
Actually, we do have a third meeting this month. The 22nd, so if you get it to me a week before the 22nd, we might be good.
Okay, great, thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
And they also qualify, the Mexican Violence Centers qualify for donations by the county, Great Crisis Center. I don't know how much they do on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Another avenue to donate is...
Yeah, well, I just wanted to get the ball rolling with this one request and then we can see what else we can come up with. We can't let Rebecca make us all look bad. Just saying. Had to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, would you like to speak now, because he's gonna leave?
Total, we have 731, 41 misdemeanors. 731 total, 41 misdemeanors, 110 females, 58 that are cleared state arrest, and 35 federal inmates. We have zero COVID in the jail area.
Hey, do you have right now, in that?
Who, what?
Right now. I'm thinking of...
Yeah, we do. Got one or two.
Can I go to that? Can I go get tried, resourcing?
Get out of jail.
I think you could refer them to you.
Wherever they want.
Did she visit? Did she visit?
Well, now, I was thinking you could refer them to her.
That, they, I think there's already a referral there, isn't there? I think we do refer them to, when they come in, we refer them to y'all already. So we do that.
Okay, number four, recognize Johnny Olson with LPK Architects, give an update on Mayor's County Law Department complex.
Good morning, I'm Johnny Olson, Principal Architect with LPK Architects. Here this morning, just to give you a brief, it can be as brief or as detailed as you'd like, just update on where we are with the multi-department complex. Over the last couple of months, we've been meeting with the different department directors, with Jackie, Teresa, Pat, and Sharon. And we've come up with a, you know, we came to you back in late July or early July and discussed the preliminary budget based on our programming analysis. We, we were in the 20, just over 20,000 square foot range. Today, with the programming, actual organization, office layouts and so forth, we're at a gross square footage of 22,400 square feet, which leads to a slight modification of our estimate. What you're gonna see that's coming around is the current estimate projection in the range of 4.4 to 5.6 million. I believe when we were here the last time, it was right at, I want to say 4.2 to 5.2, somewhere in that range. So what we have seen, and most of you know if you follow any, any level of construction, is that construction costs have gone up substantially over the last year. They, they have begun to level out to a point where the month-over-month increase has kind of stayed the same. There was a point there where the, where in the summer, there was a peak. There was a pretty extensive peak in that construction cost on a month-over-month basis. But right now, we think it's leveled out to about 10% per month is what we're, in some, in some cases, I wouldn't say the project as a whole, but what I'm saying is that the sooner that we can get to a, the sooner we can get to a advertisement for bid, the better off we believe everybody's gonna be. Because over the next couple of years, we see the construction costs beginning to level out, but not necessarily comes down. That's our, we deal with a lot of construction management with bigger firms like Yates and so forth in the Meridian area and down on the coast. And what they're, what they're seeing is that over the next 18 months or so, we're not gonna get a whole lot. Unfortunately, construction costs aren't gonna come down to, let's say, pre-COVID numbers, we don't think. But they'll begin to level out. So point being, the sooner that we can get to a bidding standpoint, the better. And Supervisor Martin and I have been talking about that in the first quarter of next year is when we would like to have this project out on the street for bid. What we're looking at, that you've got in your hand, is the five-acre parcel that the Development Commission has carved out for us in that new development on Seaway. We've located the building essentially centered with the new curb cut, the new median turning bay that's there, that you can go for, if you're westbound, you can make a 90-degree turn and go directly south into the site. Bill Labors and I had worked a year, year and a half ago on this sort of industrial park, strip mall concept, so that each of the parcels were connected, making it easier for, for you to do business along the corridor there. You could come in, let's say if you're coming in from the west, heading east, you may come into that first parcel and drive your way down, getting off of Seaway, any, any of those four or five points. Real simple construction, we're trying to be as economical as we can be. Pre-engineered metal building with kind of an industrial aesthetic on the exterior. Basically all metal building panels, you know, hurricane-impact glass, all the code requirements. But with the individual departments, we, again, we've, we've met, they've sort of vetted the plan. We know that when we go from this schematic design stage to the design development stage, which is the next phase of construct or design, that we'll make some, we'll make some tweaks with this floor plan. But in general, we have a high level of comfort from each of those departments on where we're headed so far. Roughly 118 parking spaces, that includes some truck and trailer parking. We know that some of the folks that come in to get, you know, code approvals and whatnot are construction contractors that, that are carrying trailers with them. So we want to make sure we add places for them to park. We've got roughly two acres at the backside of the site reserved for future development. We've talked about, you know, a future, future construction that may be connected to this building physically or it may be sort of across that parking lot. So, you know, we're trying to, trying to make good use of the five acres that we've been promised, pushing the building as close to the front as possible by keeping the, the back open. The front of the building, the roof line would slope toward the front, so you could have a, kind of a high ceiling space when you walk into the lobby. And then you've got three individual lobbies for those departments, including a secure area for the tax collector, because we know that that's really important, to keep that security level in that suite. So they're sort of self-contained.
And I can talk to her about it, right?
We did, so if you look at the site plan, the very, the first and the second page, if you look toward the right-hand side of the site, what would happen is you would loop around the building, driver's side window, you would come in off of that drive and then you could do the night drop. So we're looking at not necessarily a staffed window with a big roof overhang and the tubes that you would see at the bank. This is more like what you might see at a night drop next to an ATM or something along that line, where you could drop things, but you may not be doing interaction with a personnel, a staff member. We're, we're still working through that. We're not, we're not eliminating that opportunity, but it, it could be a sliding window, let's just say like you see at a fast food kind of place, or it's a night drop that would be operational after hours.
So what do we need to do to, to do the next thing?
What we're here asking for, and so we've gotten to the schematic design phase and the way that contract, AIA contracts are written is we, we need to collectively agree on a budget that we would use for the purposes of, you know, our billing and so forth. And so with that, with that estimate range, I want to make sure that everybody's as comfortable as can possibly be with what we've presented, which is, you know, the estimated low at 4.4, the estimated high at 5.6. We think it's gonna be somewhere in the middle. I'm, I'm trying to be as conservative as possible.
But now, Zach, was our people doing a lot of this work?
This is as if we were doing a turnkey project.
Yeah, but we don't want to do that, because we can do the dirt work and...
Understream. The way we design it, right, but the way, the way we design it is as if there's a turnkey, but we know that there can be some value engineering savings as far as county labor, okay, and so forth. Materials are still gonna have a cost associated with them, labor is a different idea.
Is there a way that you can give us a figure, including the in-kind services?
I would have to work...
What should we get with that engineer?
Sure, I'd have to work with them. We're gonna get to that point, you know, well before bidding, we'll definitely get to that point. We just want to keep going with the, with the design work, with the understanding that we're targeting somewhere in the $4.5 million range. So for the purposes of contracts and whatnot, that's where we would like to be. The project could come in higher, it could come in lower. But the point is, is that once it does bid, we reconcile invoicing and all of that stuff. I don't want to dig into the weeds of that too much, but we're just wanting to keep, keep going forward with the design work that everybody's got a comfort level that we're heading in the right direction.
Are you saying, Johnny, we need to contract with you, or do we already have that?
Yes, sir, that's already in place, that contract's already in place.
What percent do we pay it?
I'd have to go back and look, I want to say it's in the 6.5 or 7% range. It's real common across the board, any, any other architect in the state is gonna be right in that range for public projects. So we use the State Bureau of Buildings B-Curve, and so that's a, you know, a general guideline. Yes, sir.
Just dumb it down for me a little bit. Show we're ready, we've been doing this for about three years now?
Yeah, we're ready, yeah.
Yeah, man. It's time to shake and bake.
There you go. I like it.
Can we do it in, you know, like we're gonna do a slab in a building, metal building? That's one price. They want to do something else, and maybe there's a way to do it that way as opposed to just looking at this one big price at one time. That way we can go ahead and get ready with our, our, let dirt work and our...
We could do it, we could do an early site foundation package, which we do pretty commonly. What's gonna happen is there's gonna be a geotech report and it's gonna say whether you need to bring in a lot of dirt or take out a lot of dirt.
Well, we got guys that can tell us that, so you don't have to bid that out. Just do the package, we'll give it to our guys.
Right, right. No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that there would, yes, yes, there can be some phasing. I would not recommend breaking the building down into, say, a foundation package and then an electrical package and then a plumbing package and interior finishes. It's just not big enough really to do that. You do that on a 15, 20 million dollar project, you don't do that a lot on projects this scale. You're gonna get a much better product if you're able to bid it as much turnkey as possible, with the exception of the site work.
Oh, let's start.
Let's go, I'm like camp, man, we've been talking about this three years.
I mean, can we start with the foundation in the metal building? We know it's got to have a 140 wind load.
Yeah, 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 so we can, we can look at foundations, but when we bid the project, it's gonna be, a contractor starts and he keeps going, he's not gonna have any waiting periods.
Because of the mound, because of the mound, you're gonna have to bid it out.
Each phase is gonna have to be there, right?
Each phase is gonna have to be bid out, right?
You're gonna have to bid it out.
What you said, I assume, Johnny, what you're saying is, uh, before you go out for the bid specs, you will know what we're gonna do with the camera, and you'll know what you're gonna contract out. So the contractor will know what his
Yes.
obligations are based on the bid specs, and we'll know what ours is based on the lack of it.
Yes, yes. I think you hit the nail on the head.
So if we're doing site work, we do the site.
And, and all you're looking for is authorization to do whatever you need to do to
Just to keep going.
get it going.
That's right.
Let's get it going and then go out for bids.
That's right. So we've just presented a schematic design, and with, with design, there's schematic design, design development, and then construction documents. So we're a couple of months away from having this ready to bid, is, is the point that I'm trying to make. So we're just asking for approval.
So I'll make a motion. Motion on the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, much as.
Thank you very much.
We expect to see you back here in June.
Yes, ma'am. Stay here.
Thanks, Johnny.
We need to get going on this. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, deviate once again from our agenda. I was just informed that we have a young lady here, I think. Amy?
Ivy.
Ivy?
Ivy.
Ivy, would you come up and tell, uh, introduce yourself and tell us why you're here? I apologize. Completely unaware of it. Wanted to address that one. Take your name and address, please.
I'm Ivy Joshua. Uh, my address is one seventy ninety Dr. Santa Road. Um, I'm here today to get your approval for my Eagle project. Um, the, I wanted to do, make a new flag pole at the Bruce Vladimir Memorial Park on fifty-three. The previous pole was damaged in a storm. Um, the American flag is a symbol of our great nation and represents a history of perseverance, inheritance, and valor. As you know, traditionally, at the beginning of every sporting event, the national anthem is played to honor our, our flag. However, first as American and second as a scout, I find it saddening that there's no flag to look to as the anthem plays. Uh, as you can see from the pictures in your packets, the flag pole is broken and the, um, concrete brace base is cracked. Um, if you'll turn to the last page, I have a proposal for a bigger flag pole that is twenty feet tall with an external hanger.
Do you have an idea of the cost?
Um, a little over five hundred dollars.
Would the board like to make a motion to find a flag pole for?
Is that what she's requesting?
Is that what you're asking?
Is that what she's asking?
Yeah, just need, I just need.
I'm sorry.
I think she wants.
I think I was.
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna be fundraising for it. I just need approval to do this.
Yeah, and I appreciate y'all being here. But I was gonna call you and tell you I approved it. You didn't have to be here. My assistant just told me that you called. So I'm, I'm thrilled to meet you, sweetheart. And yes, thank you. And I can do it, um, for my account. Okay.
We need a motion.
I need a, a motion second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this gallant effort by this boy scout, by the way.
Girl scout, boy scout?
She's Eagle, Eagle Scout.
She's Eagle Scout.
Girl scout, Eagle.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. Uh, all those opposed, motion carries.
And thank you so very much.
And good luck.
Okay.
Tell me where.
Thank you so much.
Baby, can I be your first donor?
Yes.
No, I wasn't.
Yeah, but I can't, yeah. I can't, I can't, I can't get a card.
All right, everyone.
I didn't give you no card.
I take cash.
That's right.
I take cash from everybody.
Tim Holland. Hey, Joe, help us.
We can just got a basket, John, wanna go here just to buy? Got your keys?
Love all your flowers.
Yeah, we had some out.
Might get five hundred before you get out of here.
Before you ever get out the door.
His son went to school with my daughter.
Brandon?
In elementary school.
Brandon's a judge?
Yeah. Thank you. Ivy, we'll keep in touch, okay, when you're gonna.
Thanks. Behind you, there's.
Look, y'all get your wallets out.
Oh, over here too, babe.
We got it, we got one up here, we got one up here. Second row, left, if you have a match. Let's hear it. Come on, Bill Labors, I'm seeing you get that ball now, man. Look at Tim, he's so sweet. All right, anybody else? Okay, number five. Order concurring with the resolution of the Harris County Development Commission authorizing a preemptive correction of a script nurse error and execution of a corrected special warrant to deed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You wanna talk about it?
We, we, yeah, we feeded the west side instead of the east side, so we're flipping them back to.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item six. Order concurring with the resolution, Harris County Development Commission authorizing approving sale approximately one point nine five acres located in Bayo Bernard Industrial District, L G Enterprise LLC for the purpose of operating a laydown yard. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seven. Order concurring with the resolution, Harris County Development Commission acknowledging and approving exercise of a previously granted right of first refusal to purchase approximately two point oh acres. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eight. Order concurring with the resolution, Harris County Development Commission, an approving lease purchase agreement with Crow's Construction LLC. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item nine. Order concurring with the resolution, Harris County Development Commission, authorizing and approving one acreth in property leased with Crow's Construction. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Any, any else, Mr. Labors?
No, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy for your anniversary.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda items ten, three thirteen have been placed on the consent agenda. Same appearing to be routine uncontroversial matters, and with all supervisors, I want to agree. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Martin, I have some question about number ten.
Yes.
That's the lease that was approved, and this lease requires that the county maintain the business? Make, tell, maintain the business?
Oh, have we looked at it?
Yeah, we looked at it.
I've sent an email saying you need to look at it, photograph, and document the condition of it. Has that been done?
Um, when we previously looked at this, there were photos that were submitted. Um, I could resubmit those, um, about a year ago. We did walk through it last week, and it was saying to you, I could resubmit those.
Take, take current pictures, man. Take current pictures. So the day we take possession, we know what condition it's in, so we don't get no problem.
Should we send the professional?
Has the county employee gone through it with that?
Well, I guess I'm not sure if y'all want to do that.
Yes. No offense, but we cannot trust pictures. We haven't proven that.
Outside building, ground man, uh, the town should look at that.
We're gonna send our outside.
Video.
ground guy, which is.
Just make sure it gets done before you take possession of the building, so we know what condition it is.
Can I say anything else, Mr. Labors?
No, I'm just gonna make sure it gets done, because we already have that problem on.
Pam, will you make sure that they go check it out?
Before we take possession, huh, Tim?
Before we take.
You said before we take possession.
Before you take possession of the building.
We're, we're safe.
Right. Inside and out.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fourteen. Order approving in-county travel reimbursement with the tax assessor's office as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen. Order spreading on the minutes personnel changes with the tax assessor's office as listed on file with payroll. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen. Order approving the payment of claims listed as recommended by Jackie Turner, P.E., Harris County Engineer. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen. Order approving payment of claims as listed as recommended by Jackie Turner, P.E., Harris County Engineer. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighteen. Order approving travel for Matt Scranton and Robert Dambino, E.M.A., to attend the twenty twenty-one MPI recipient instructor certification training workshop to be held on December seventh through the ninth in Starkville, Mississippi. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item nineteen. Order indicating travel for Scott Waverley, youth court prosecutor, for attendance to the twenty twenty-one Mississippi prosecutors conference in Choctaw, Mississippi, at no cost to the county. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty. Discuss authorizing the board president to sign a letter addressed to the Mississippi Division of Public Safety Planning Office of Justice Programs reporting the occurrence of a laptop damage by juvenile purchased by subgrant number one six J one two four one. Do we have a motion to discuss?
Motion.
Second.
Discuss. Um, this is a letter that Valerie had asked that I signed, but however, I don't know, Tim had an issue with it, so I wanted to bring it up to the board.
You don't have any knowledge of it, I'm concerned. If somebody with knowledge needs to sign the letter, then the board president can forward it to them, but.
So we need to just have the judge sign it, is what I'm thinking.
Was there a police report down on that?
There is a, what we call an RVR that they do in detention. It just has Myers information, they like their names, so we'd have to get, because it's confidential to release that, which we can do that. But when I spoke to the great agency, they did say it had to be the board president because the board president has to have signed the initial paper.
I don't have a problem with the board president signing a letter saying, this was reported to me that this occurred, and here's the evidence of that. I don't have a problem with that. I don't.
Yeah, but we need to add it.
When the letter's written, it's, she's conveying knowledge she doesn't have. If you'll send me the letter, put me in massage.
The, the RVR, the letter?
Both.
Okay, yeah.
If you'll just email me the letter of work, and I'll fix it and.
Yeah, and then we'll put it back. Then we'll meet again on the twenty-second. Valerie said, we can do it then.
I need something from somebody that.
Somebody else besides me. I, I didn't even know you had a laptop, much less.
And I can get, I can get Judge Dixon to be the election official, write a letter to supplement what you signed.
That letter can be directed to the board president, and the board president will send the letter along with whatever statement they need.
Okay, so we're not gonna take any action.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Item twenty-one. Order approving out-of-state travel as listed, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Now, I need to go, 'cause they're going to Buckies, not New York City.
Oh, Lord, you've never been out of Buckey.
They're going to Buckey's. The Little Market Prime, the lot senior center. I think we should.
Those take three days to get out of Sparky.
It's pretty nice.
Check it out.
I got a good part.
Where's Robert's Hill Alibi?
It's on the way to Hornbeak.
Hornbeak, Ball Beach.
I wouldn't mind if we rode the bus.
Drive?
We have enough room?
Thanks, guys.
I bet.
We're investing in them. We need to go see it.
It's the Walmart of gas stations, that's all. It's got everything you can imagine in there, too.
You know, they know. It's nice to go see it. I'm gonna do, we need to go see it. Go see it.
Who cares?
I really do want to see it. I've never been.
Me?
To Buckey's?
No.
All grains.
You might get you something to eat. You can get something to eat all around there, and you get something to eat again.
Literally, when that building, this is like a little gas station, that thing. You got things, you got.
Two hundred some gas pump.
We got a four, we got two.
It's like a destination. They got a pretty good bar.
No, they're good.
They're pretty good.
Good.
I heard you did Christmas shopping, too. We could go send a revenue later.
Yeah.
Our cake sounds good. Gee, cake that on the twenty-second. Item twenty-two. Speaking of twenty-second. Order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two one one zero X C one eight oh for zoning. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three. Order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two one one zero X C one eight two for zoning map amendment and conditional use permit. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-four. Order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two one one zero X C one eight five for a zoning map amendment. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Jinx.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-five. Order concurring with road manager unemployment as listed and on file with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-five. Order concurring, I'm sorry, I missed it. Twenty-six. Order spreading on the minutes personnel changes of the sheriff's office as listed and on file with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-seven. Order concurring with the county administrator unemployment as listed on file with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-eight. Order approving claims listed to be paid from the tort account. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-nine. Order spreading on the minutes a list of emergency blood quotes and state contract orders issued by the purchasing department for the month of October. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty. Order approving the emergency purchase of Casper pro-unit disinfectant systems to be installed in Harris County Adult Detention Center in Gulfport due to the continued threat of COVID nineteen. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion. Is that the same thing we did for the county?
For the two courtesans?
For two quarters.
It's seventy-five thousand. I think they went out there and got all the measurements.
Yeah.
That's the same.
Same. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. We still wanna do the senior citizens centers, too.
Yeah, we need to do that.
We need to get them on board. Okay, we already talked to the sheriff?
You want him to go out and talk to seniors?
Yeah, I think we need to probably do that, too.
I am curious, just out of information purposes, do it, is there any science backing that, that it is, uh, there's efficacy to that spray to clean it up? We're spending a lot of money. Is, is it, is it effective? Is, is there efficacy behind that?
Look, it's our big warrants, you don't have one.
Does it really, does it really help the virus, destroy the virus?
Yes.
I, I don't know. We're just doing this based on the company's statement that, whether, whether it's effective or not, whether there's any efficacy to, to that.
I can't speak for the courthouse, but I will speak for the jail. With, within, you know, that, that jail's thirty-something years old, and the system they put in now is not up to, up to date as it would be today.
So you're talking about just.
Would it be a brother, better breathing for health and everything for the inmates? Yes.
Yeah.
So, but what you're talking about, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I'm just curious. I've spent all this money without anybody telling me that that is an effect, I mean, effective deterrent to the virus.
Well, I think in the presentation, he showed the effectiveness of it and where it is.
He told you that.
The Casper.
Casper thing.
That's what I'm saying.
Will this expenditure be paid with the ARPA money? It isn't allowable use, but if it's going to be paid under the ARPA money, you probably need to add some verbiage to the order.
Well, it's an emergency purchase.
Yeah.
Well, but saying it's going to come from those funds is an allowable use, like they talked about in that conference. I think it's just.
And we just add that to it.
Yes, that'll be where it's being paid for.
Okay, item thirty two. Order approving payments of claims listed below, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, item thirty three. Order approving the blood quote purchase of twenty twenty one Chevrolet Silverado crew cab pickup from Roger Dab Chevrolet at a cost of twenty eight thousand four seventy five, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item thirty four. Order approving mileage reimbursement for in county travel for the following employees, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item thirty five. Order removing asset per list from disposal list and authorizing inventory clerk to correct inventory. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, item thirty six. Order authorizing disposal of assets per the tax list and authorizing inventory clerk to move the same from the inventory. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion, who decides this? Um, I'm just curious, from my own education, who decides who goes on this and how many eyes see these things?
The disposal of items? The departments, they provide, they provide the information to the inventory clerk where it's going to be disposed of.
And then inventory clerk sees it and then you see it too?
Yes.
They provide and then we remove it. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, item thirty seven. Order authorizing the interphone line repayment if any per the attached schedule, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item thirty eight, order authorizing reimbursement to the road fund in the amount of three thousand three eleven eighty two payable from the general fund for work performed on jail parking lot. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, item thirty nine. Order authorizing payment in amount of four hundred eighty nine thousand nine fifty eight fifty two to City of Biloxi for the fourth quarter fiscal year twenty twenty one. Final payment for Biloxi port bonds, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty, order approving claims Dr. Hermes to the code one nine seven two. Section nineteen thirteen twenty seven, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, item forty one. Order approving payment of claims listed below, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, item forty two. Discuss authorizing execution of service agreements with Oceans Behavior Hospital and Gulfport Behavioral Hospital for treatment and housing of indigent and resident residents to Mississippi Code four one two one seven one and four one two seven seven three. Do we need a motion to discuss?
Motion, second discussion.
Second for discussion. Okay, what's the deal here?
Tim, I, I don't, uh, I, I think it specifically states that no, no one that will be deferred as, as long as we have beds at CSU.
I don't think the agreements actually say that, that's part of the intent of it.
I, I thought it did say that. I read it.
Well, I hadn't read it in a while, I apologize.
Yeah, I think it indicates that.
That's the purpose of it.
The purpose of it is, and what we're trying to do is make sure we're not paying for something when we already paying for it at CSU.
I can comment if you'd like. Um, this is a, a commitment of an indigent patient in need of treatment after the court determines this per patient needs treatment. Um, what has happened in the past, and it's getting better, is that, uh, CSU did not have the staff, we had to send them back to the E Rs if they were there. This gives an opportunity now for treatment in the county to provide that treatment upon commitment and it's determined by the court they're indigent. If they have a payer source, obviously, this is not something that the county would be obligated for.
But who does the evaluation?
We contact CSU, the state hospital, everyone first. If that person cannot be placed, this is the last alternative.
Now, according to their, I'm sorry.
Well, let me just clarify for my, I'm just trying to get it straight.
It's the role of the clerk of the court, and that's my office.
I, I understand that, what I'm trying to say is that, do they go to CSU for evaluation? I thought that's what happened, they recommended to CSU for evaluation, then when CSU sees them, they determine what therapy they need. Am I wrong?
No.
Then.
No, sir. What happens if this person is, uh, placed in an emergency room waiting pre-hearing? And they're indigent and CSU cannot take them.
That's my person.
That, that's what I'm getting to, okay? Once it's determined that, that person needs treatment, then the county is giving an opportunity for the court to place this person. If they're indigent into these two, uh, private facilities for treatment. What has happened, we had to send them back to the ER where they did not get treatment and CSU was full. So it's a pre-hearing placement and there's a hearing. After hearing, this is what this is about.
I think you answered my question.
I hope I did.
If CSU can take care of it, they go there.
Absolutely.
Indigent or not.
They're number one.
That's right.
They're number one.
If they can't do it, then they go to the hospital.
And the state hospital's number one, we contact them immediately upon committee.
But see, like, on.
Okay, I can't finish.
I'll just, I'm sorry, I'll just pick a day here, I went through the spreadsheet, so. For instance, on September twenty first, CSU only had eleven patients, but sixteen fit. However, one person was sent to Gulfport Behavioral. The very next day, it's the same count, eleven. Two were sent to Oceans and one to Gulfport Behavioral, so I guess my question is, according to Mr. McAdams' figures that he's providing us, why, it doesn't appear that CSU is full, so why would you go ahead and send them to?
We don't, we don't do that unless they can't take them for security reasons? Health reasons?
Let me, let me stay there, let me.
All right.
Let me just pipe in a second, John, hang on, tell me, John just coming from. I don't want to step on your toes, but, but I want you to understand what he's trying to say. When.
I need an interpreter.
When, when somebody is, uh, and let's just use Kent, for example, use a person. I, Kent needs to be assessed, so he goes to Memorial Hospital, he goes to wherever, they admit him in Memorial Hospital. Before, the family then turns around and comes and meets with John and, and everybody else, says, I need, I need to do a writ on Kent to get him assigned to CSU. They do an assessment at Memorial Hospital first. Then they take him, the writ's done, they take him to CSU. If Kent gets to CSU, and this is the unknown that, that nobody tells y'all. If Kent gets to CSU and Kent has a running nose, Kent has high blood pressure, he's stressed out from going in there. If he has anything wrong with him, he is not accepted.
If he's drunk, if he's a half.
Well, he won't be drunk, he's going to be in Memorial those days. Anything wrong with him medical, CSU's going to say, I'm not taking it.
Right.
That is, that is a lot of our issues, so they don't take them for whatever reason. Then we have to take them back to Memorial. Then Memorial just releases person, then we take them back to Memorial.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
Unless it's a perfect situation, CSU will accept it.
So how about we tell Memorial, don't send with a running nose or high blood pressure, if that is the case, don't, because you're just wasting transportation, right?
Well, we don't know that.
Yeah.
We, we don't know that, it's, it's apples and oranges, it's never apples and oranges.
Memorial, how would you not know that?
I'm, I didn't fact.
How would you not know what?
Yeah, if you're at Memorial being assessed, how would you not see his running nose?
Memorial's, Memorial's looking at a writ signed by a judge.
Not the person.
Not the person, they're looking at the writ saying, there's a writ issued for that person to go to CSU.
But you think they're discharged? No?
Yeah, they're discharged.
They're not discharged, so they don't physically see the person, they just see the paper? Do you have any sense?
They're not, they're not concerned with whether he's got a running nose or not. They're concerned with whether, I need to empty this emergency room bed. I need to get somebody else in this bed other than a mental patient, because he's got somewhere to go to CSU. So they take him to CSU, CSU immediately says, no, we're not going to take him. They pick and choose who goes in that bed.
But according to Mona at Pineville, that is not the case.
That is, that is a total lie, it's not true.
Cause she says that they've only turned them one or two, one had a brain.
That is not, that is absolutely not true. What I told my guys to do about a month ago was start taking, making a list of every single person they, they returned.
That, that.
And ask for what reason.
That's what, that's what we need.
I don't know where we're at on the list right now, but I'm telling you, that is not true.
Has those records, the first of the court has.
If you are violent in any way, if you get out of the car and say, I ain't going in there, you're going back in the car back to Memorial. Simple as that.
See, that's what we. We've got a meeting set for November ten.
I'll be there.
And we need that information.
We know that information, they know it.
Can I, can I help a little bit? Cause plus, there's two laws that are, both of these statutes state that the court can order them to be taken to a private facility and paraphrase, that's exactly what it says. And order the county residents of the person to pay. This whole thing started because initially we had one of these facilities send a bill for half a million dollars. So all these con, this contract was done for was to try to put some limitation in place. But the board would get the information, one of the people was there seventy days. And it costs eight hundred dollars a day for seventy days, a huge part of the bill. So what the board instructed me to do back then was to try to draft a contract that put in place some limitations that gave us, gave the board some input into what was going on. And so the contract basically says that they're going to have a court order. If they don't have a court order, the contract says we're not going to pay. Second thing is that court order lasts for seven days. And that was based on what we were told was a reasonable period of time to get somebody stabilized, it may go longer for some people, but they got to go back to the court and ask the court for an extension of that order so that you're, you have somebody checking the checks and balances are in place to try not to have some of that.
But the missing piece, Mr. Holman, is, were they first taken to CSU? And if so, why did CSU not take them? That's the one.
Let me answer, let me answer. Let me answer the question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Holman's got to show her.
No, I, I'm telling you, you're way off base, you won't listen to the process at all, the process in the clerk of the court. It all starts with us, I have everything you need to know about that person that's being picked up. I have the packets, we notify all the hospitals, we notify CSU. My point is, it all starts with the clerk and then the court and then the sheriff. And the sheriff's role is when the writ's issued for this person to be picked up. So this allows, after commitment, after you have a hearing, this person is determined to be treated and they're indigent. Right now, you have no course to treat that person if CSU is full. This is what allows a remedy for commitments.
This is the question, this is what I'm trying to get to, John, I think the question has been answered both by you and Tim. Number one, I don't want to be paying twice for something.
Absolutely.
If, if we're paying for services at, uh, Pineville, uh, Regional there, and if that, those services can be offered, if there's beds available, that's where that person needs to go because we already paying for it.
That's what the clerk of the court does.
Secondly, if those services are not available, then that's where the contract with, uh, the hospital is coming in.
Not necessarily, that's, that's totally different. This is after a hearing and they are placed for treatment and CSU's full, they can't take that person. Then it's, it's the option of the state hospital and if that's not there, then this is available.
That's what I'm saying, we going in circles, so I, we are, we are sure that we're not paying for something and not being used and going to a private facility and paying for it.
Number one step.
For what, if, if something, if a bed.
Number one step, if you grasp this, is Pineville. Number one step.
That's what I'm asking.
That's the one, that's who tells us what they can do. And it was reported to the court and they tell us if there's certain reasons they can't take them. If they are, if there's health issues and so forth. So, my point is this, this is a remedy after commitment.
I don't have a problem with it, that's, that's what I'm saying. And, and for example, we, we, we have the ability as a board, since we're paying for this. If we see Joe Blow is admitted to Gulfport Behavioral Hospital, well, we can go and say, why was Joe Blow not sent to CSU or to Pineville? And you'll have the record that those services were not available or was denied by Pineville and therefore we sent him to Gulfport Behavioral.
We al, we already have that, we already have everything you're asking.
I understand that, and we can see that, so if we get, if we feel like we're getting a bill like.
Like we got last time.
Too much, and we say something not gee-hawing here, then we can look at it and determine each one of those commitments as to why they were not handled by Pineville.
Absolutely, and I'll have a record of, if, if CSU can't take them at Pineville, I'll have a record of that.
Gotcha.
And we will report to the court when that person is being treated there that they're meeting their seven days, so we're monitoring this daily. Every day we monitor where they're located and what the county's responsibility. CSU will reach out and take someone when they get a bid, so we work with them on that.
It's also the, the, you've got to remember, this contract has to do with after everything we've discussed has already been exhausted or should have been exhausted, I'm not going to say that it was the correct decision because that's something between Pineville and the county to work out if there's people that are not being taken for one reason. But these two contracts are after that decision has already been made, and these two contracts are made to try to create some limitations on these facilities.
Right.
Some obligation on their part because, and I'm not faulting them. I'm not saying they did this. But when you hold somebody for 70 days without any attempt to get them to the state hospital or something at $800 a day, that's significant to the taxpayer. So the, the reason the contracts are done, the way they were done was to try to put in place some agreement between them and the county that you're not going to get paid unless you do X, Y, Z. Get a court order that lasts seven days. Past seven days, you'll get another court.
They gotta go back.
And so if they don't do that, they're just not going to get paid. And so that was the purpose of these two contracts. I think they do that now. This is not something we've done before, so it may require some misogynist. We learn when we go through it. But ultimately, the court can order this anyway.
Can, can we just table this though?
No, 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 no. Listen. I'm satisfied. Are you satisfied with the contract as written, Tim?
I'm satisfied with the contract subject to a learning curve as we start going through some of these people.
It would be informed of that.
Cause it seems like Pineville's.
At this time then to make, we have a discussion now.
Right.
I'm prepared at this time to make a motion to adopt these contracts. This has to be taken care of. No more table.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to approve.
Discussion. It seems that we are always leaving Pineville out of the conversation. And I don't know why that is. We've had meetings with judges and everybody else, but for some reason Pineville's not invited.
Pineville, I, I, I've talked to Pineville and, and what Troy is saying and, and what John is saying is true. She verified that, that if, if they're hostile or one of the conditions.
And he, and he type of medical condition?
Medical condition, hostile, won't go aggressive or anything like that. They won't accept.
And I will say this, Pineville has done a lot, they've done a lot better than the last group we had. They have. I, I agree with that. I don't agree with, with some of their, their tactics on how they do things, but that's their policy procedure for what they're going by. Right now, they're working on, they're working on a 12-person bed instead of a 16-person bed because they don't have the manpower to run a 16-person bed. According to, according to them and being on the board, they're hiring right now and they're trying to hire, just like everybody else is, is hurting. So they are too. So I get, I get everything that, that's going on, but, but what John is saying is there has to be a, a, another step to take care of the people so that ERs aren't full and we're not, we're not killing hospitals.
Yes.
But they are back doing a 16-person bed according to what they're sending us. CSU.
I think so. They, they claimed that they're, or they told us in, in a meeting, they told us that they had hired.
They hadn't been over 11 months.
Am I not mistaken that they hired enough personnel to take care of the 16 beds?
Yeah.
At, at CSU.
Cause they went down to 12, they are.
They came back. That's right. That's what I understand. And if I recall correctly, that's what they told us.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve these two contracts. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Did you vote?
No.
Okay. Number 43, order approving continuation of proclamation of the existence of local emergency within Harrison County due to this threat of COVID-19. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 44, order approving subleases for 16th section public school trust land consisting of approximately 88.962 acres located in a northwest quadrant of intersection of US 49 and I-10 for Snappy Investments LLC. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, 44. So what is this? The Snappy Investments is leasing school land?
Yeah, what we doing, Tim? Just verify. We just kinda required to approve whatever their school board does. We don't really have any. It's more of a ministerial function.
The only time, the only time the board has a direct say so is when you question the value of the lease. These are subleases, so you really don't have authority to question this value. I mean, not, not required to be approved by the board, but some of the title attorneys require it just because they're like title insurance.
Is, Timmy Smith, is Gulf Re's the company we spoke about earlier?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Sounds like shopping center, just like.
Okay, all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 45, order approving open door sublease request for reimbursement. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 46, order authorizing, approving, oh, I'm sorry. We need to, um, remove item 46. They have withdrawn their request.
I was wondering why they're getting all that on.
Yeah. So do we need a motion to withdraw that?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 46. Order approving the transfer of $500 from 002900950 to be used for Thanksgiving and Christmas luncheons at the Red Barnett Senior Center. Do we have a motion?
Second discussion, what are the two numbers? What are we transferring?
From Esco to, uh, the senior center.
Why just one senior center?
Yeah, fine. Okay.
Well, actually I need to probably add, um, or they've done everybody else's.
Gotcha.
But I do need to add in addition to Red Barnett, the East Beluxie Center, but they only need $200.
All right, you're generous.
We did yours.
Did we do one more?
We did yours. We did one more.
We did Lyman? I don't know. They haven't done Lyman.
Oh, we haven't done Lyman. You want to say Lyman?
Yeah, that's why I was saying.
All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
The discussion.
So 700.
The senior citizen never came to me for.
Me either. That's why.
They haven't said anything to me. Why wouldn't they, why wouldn't they?
They don't cook.
Huh? They can't cook.
No, they've been cooking at Lyman for the.
Well, why couldn't you do the same for Christmas party?
Tammy does all the cooking at Lyman for all of them or two, three. Well, they don't have to write.
Why couldn't you do that for Christmas party?
Um, this is for Christmas or. Be nice to them. This is, well, they don't have a, um, director right now at Lyman, remember? So maybe they just didn't really. But I think they're, they are doing a dinner and they are doing a Thanksgiving dinner and a Christmas. I know Janet's been talking to them about it. For Luvuian Lyman, for Luvuian Lyman.
I haven't had any money.
I guess they have. It must be, I don't know how, but.
Is SMPVD opening that?
I don't know. I'll have to talk to Janet. Why are you talking to Miss Yunice about the master plan for each one? Which is doing well? Who's cooking for which senior center? How much it will cost for each, the number of heads we expect? I mean. They have some money in their budget for some things. But you know what I mean? Like you gotta see the big picture. This is strange.
She's doing, she given, we transferring funds out of Esco. I'd do the same too if it were requested, but they're not buying that for. We don't want it. Would you check? Can you see? Check and see why they're not doing it for those folks. It should be across county. It should be for everybody, all the states.
We've changed from five to 700. It's 500 to.
Do you want, um, you want me to, between the two of y'all?
He's bought it.
Y'all want me to, in case, in case there is.
Y'all want to go ahead and do all of them just in case?
In there just in case. That's what I'm saying. So if you want or. I want her to just do all.
Yeah, but I don't know how many.
They just doing it for one or two.
Might be more than this. Y'all ready?
And we have S2.
We have a meeting. I would say, I would say 500 because.
Up to 500.
Because of numbers.
There might be a smaller group. It might not cost as much, but up to 500 or whatever. It's coming to 100 counties. That's not right.
I'll get back.
Change your motion.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
If I'm. It's now.
We need, do a new motion.
And then I would like to have a new motion that states that every senior citizen center gets 500.
Up to. Up to.
Up to 500.
We might.
For Thanksgiving and Christmas. So we have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. But now this, this all coming out of District 1, that's.
Yeah.
I like the way y'all sleep. 48, order acknowledging receipt of and concurring with the proclamation by Governor Tate Reeves declaring the following as legal holidays. Thursday, Friday for Thanksgiving, Thursday, Friday for Christmas and Friday for New Year's Day. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second discussion, why don't we just give them this, this Thursday off as well? How about it?
We can. We are on Thursday.
All those in favor signify by aye. 49, resolution Harrison County Board Supervisors commending Dr. Virginia Rose Burkett for her selection as the 28th annual Beluxie May Good Award recipient. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I've actually presented that to her first. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 50, order of G K and authorized expenditures listed as necessary to advertise opportunities and resources in Harrison County. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Or a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This will be the first legislative reception they've had now.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Ms. Pam? Pam, you got it.
I don't know.
Pam, you got it now.
Yeah, I, I keep getting calls from specialways centers. Where are we on the protocol or the method in which we're going to allow, uh, for that, well, that county to proceed with the projects that we've approved with that, uh, code. Or that, uh.
I think I did that.
No, y'all, y'all just have them present the, the, um, project. I need to give the list. I need to prioritize the list and so we can proceed.
Can you send a list back out? I don't really think there was anything.
My point is, you prioritize, prioritize the list. The projects that were recommended and estimated cost does not exceed the money that we have.
No, it doesn't.
No, there's projects, more projects out there that didn't make the list.
Well, then we can bring those back up, but the ones we approved, we need to tell them.
We didn't approve. We didn't approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve them then.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna, I made a motion to do. I want to see the list again and I feel uncertain about, we've heard many different things, what we can spend the 40 million on. We've heard it's this, no, you can't do that. No, you can't do this. We need in, I need solid what we can spend it on and exactly how much we have.
All those projects were water and sewer projects and those are.
They qualify.
They qualify.
But there are other things that might have been presented here.
Problem is, we've got other counties that are proceeding and moving on it and doing those projects. And I'm simply saying that we need to get, I, I don't have a problem with the projects that were presented. They were all legitimate.
Jackie, what was the total amount on all those projects?
Uh, 28, 29 million.
Oh, yeah, that's, I want to see what they are again.
The collection, the community collection?
Yes, ma'am.
67.
There was also in that meeting, Mr. Jones suggested another project and then.
I'm sorry, did I?
During that meeting, Mr. Jones suggested there was another project he wanted to add and then Lexi had a few that wanted to discuss. And me too. And then also, um, the Development Commission had a few that they would like to add to the list. So I can put that full comprehensive list together again and send it back to you.
Why don't you do that?
Can we go ahead and do what we? Go ahead and vote on what we have.
No, because there won't be any money.
Yes, there will. 29 million.
I thought when they presented those projects here, when was it? Uh, Jackie? The last 4 million here at this, at our luxury court house. We all agreed that that was the projects that we were going to do. Now if there's extra money and somebody wants to add to it, fine.
We didn't approve. There was, there was no approval. He's asking to do it today.
He just made a presentation.
I'm agreeing with State Tech. Informally, we all agreed to that with the project. And if it's necessary to do a motion to approve them so we can get the projects moving, I'm prepared to make that motion. Do you have the projects that were discussed?
I, I don't have them with me here. I can send it to you today if you'd like. I will tell you that the, um, that centralized one on 67 is the most timely one and was the first one on the list. But I'll send you the entire list today and maybe on the 22nd, you can act on which ones you'd like to approve.
What is the?
And here's the deal. I remember asking him if they were in any kind of order priority wise and he said no. So why, you know, how much?
They were not, like, they were not a formal order. It was the list by our perception on timeliness with projects that they depend on. But they're not necessarily, they have to be done in this order.
Normally, normally you prioritize projects when your budgeted is limited and you're probably have to cut the budget. Now, there might be some other reasons prioritizing based on some time issue or something like that. But I don't think that's an issue now. And, and my point is, what, just let's go ahead and move on these, the ones we talked about.
But then let Jackie prioritize them?
Do whatever.
Oh, he's gonna prioritize them.
And secondly, secondly, what is the protocol? What do they need to do to get it moving and the money committed? Nobody said anything. What do they need to do?
Board approval. Yeah, all you gotta have is approve. All you gotta do is approve the project.
And I make the motion again.
A second. I'm seconding.
Got a motion and a second to approve these projects that we saw.
Jill sent them to us. Listen, I, I wouldn't do this.
I'm saying yes.
I would not do this if I didn't feel like and, and they're telling us the money's there. We have enough money.
We have a motion and a second. We got it. Let's call the question. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Okay.
Tell them to keep moving, move on.
All right, Mr. Jones, what you got?
I had a couple of things. First, it was just taking care of it for the, uh, $500 for the senior citizens, Thanksgiving. Just taking care of it. Right. Okay. The next one is, I want to get this on the agenda as for, uh, $2,000 to transfer from, I can give you this information from the Esco account to the, uh, 011 fund for the, uh, Community Christmas that we do. And the reason why I wanted to commission it today instead of putting it on the agenda is it's kind of hard to get stuff now. So if I wait until December, that's such a short window to purchase anything. Hard to get some, some purchasing. So I want to go ahead and get it approved today so we can start purchasing.
What happens, Ken?
Community Christmas, we have like, uh.
I, and then out of Esco, you said something about transferring.
Well, it has to come.
Are you purchasing for candy and decorations?
Yeah, decorations. But it has to come from Esco to June. However, however it does, that's an order that has to go to the town them off.
As long as it's Esco, get your Esco fund.
So how much you talk?
$2,000.
Okay, so we need a motion?
And that's for Christmas, can they, can, uh, uh, advertising, can they re-purchase, uh, purchasing?
Are you doing, are you doing the candy and all the decorations?
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
I have to give you a 10 on this as well.
Anything else?
Uh, please.
Anything else?
No.
Hey, and I'm with you. I got, all these came in late. I've got one, the North Bay Cibetan Club at De Yama Ville is doing their 12th annual gobble waffle food drive and great fun. And they would like to advertise candy resources with their $100 sponsor. So I'd like to make a motion that we participate with $100.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. I also got another request for a seller, come fly with me celebration event November 20th. Uh, from the Mississippi Aviation Heritage Museum.
700.
$700.
But he needs, he needs to advertise county resources. We can't buy it.
Right. And he's aware. So he, this is the new letter that he sent. So will you make that motion?
I'll make it.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. I got another one, Sacred Heart Catholic Church is requesting use of two trash trucks for December 3rd to the 5th. There again, he kind of waited for the last minute, but I'll get with the plan. So can I have a motion?
Trash trucks for what?
For their, uh, festival.
A motion, a motion.
A second.
Second.
We're doing that on advertising county resources.
Yes. Harrison County advertise the Harrison County Board Supervisors on a banner or sign for that weekend. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. And I've got one more thing to discuss an asphalt contract. Mr. Smith, I'm gonna come back to you in just a minute if you don't mind. Ms. Rocco, what you got?
Nothing. Um, so I'm sorry I was late this morning. I missed the, um, presentation from Jordan on the Mississippi Disaster and Conservation Corps. I just wanted to follow up. Did, I think you, you liked the idea and he just needs a little trailer space. Did y'all talk about maybe? Cause we have an extra trailer.
Been looking for space. Yeah, that would be good. We got the training. He's gonna do training with Matt.
Okay, great. So we've got an extra trailer. Yeah, next, right next to the shelter. It has a little walkway. That trailer is empty if we can.
Tim, can you draw something up? We'd have to rent it till right.
Well, you could probably do it if he's gonna provide services to the county. He could do it in kind, but yes, if you're gonna lease it to them, probably do a bit of memory and a little understanding.
Yeah, let's do it. Cause I didn't know where there was something.
Yeah, I think you.
The trailer already hooked up and everything?
Yeah. It's got power and water. Okay.
So will you get that for us and we'll vote on it.
Do it November 22nd.
November 22nd. We'll vote on it then.
Is there a one on make?
Yes. If you're looking at the shelter, there's a dumpster, a little gray walkway and that first trailer that's empty, that very first one. And then the CERT program, Matt, did you send in that grant for the Conservation Corps with that, what was it, $10,000 or?
Uh, they, they, they are accepting applications for the grant. Uh, we have not yet, uh, put it, uh, before the board. We are attending training, uh, next month, uh, for the approval this meeting. So after we get training, then we can, uh, start putting classes in place.
You don't think we should send it in now if that's okay to the board's pleasure because it's $10,750 that they said was very time sensitive?
We can have that, uh, for the 22nd meeting if you'd like me to get it.
That'd be great. Just so we can see it. I'd hate to miss out.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Oh, Miss one. Okay, Ms. Powers, was this letter from you? Cause from Mississippi homeschool sports?
Yes. Um, I was gonna just ask you, um, if we could put it on next week's agenda, but I can mention it. It's basically just homeschooling has increased 600% believe it or not because of politics and COVID. And this man, Jim Davidson, does all the sports and he's already done, um, blah, 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 track and field, but now he needs baseball, basketball, cheerleading, soccer. Not money, just facilities. So I was just gonna look, obviously they can use our soccer field. Obviously they can. I'm gonna call Gulfport and see if they can use that. He's not asking for money, he's just asking that all homeschooled children could use all of our facilities, and I wouldn't see a problem with that.
Well, it could be, it could be a problem.
Oh.
Yes, it could be, because we, you need to get with Bobby Trussler over there.
No, I understand.
The manager on our fields and everything, sure, because when you start talking about school activities, you're talking about a good, you know, if, if, I don't know exactly how much is it of soccer and baseball and basketball, we don't have any gyms, do we? Basketball wouldn't be applicable unless you wanna play outside.
I was gonna call golf court too, I'm gonna call golf court, things that we don't have, obviously, you'd have to call the cities.
But it can put, it, it could place the demand on our facilities.
Yeah, well, I would just like to interject that homeschooling saves tax dollars, as you can all imagine, Renee, or in the school board, hundreds of.
If, if it's.
Millions of dollars if people take education with their own hands.
I would object to it, if, if the facilities available, and we don't wanna put strain on those.
So should I invite him to November sec- twenty-second, or?
Bobby needs, Bobby needs to be involved, really need to.
He and Bobby have already gotten together.
Oh, okay.
That's the first thing I told him, was you need to talk to Mr. Trussler, and so that's what Bobby told him to send us this. Whatever y'all think, I mean, I'm just the messenger.
Well, they're community fields, you know, if they, if they, if they, if they build a league, they're community fields, so I don't think we can start as.
Say leave it up to Bobby if they're available.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we don't have to vote, I just leave it to Bobby to help him identify, okay, thank you.
Or leagues.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
I got one thing, oh, it's. Yeah, I just wanna get the board approval to be able to visit the core engineers and workers on occasion, in case we, uh, have to have some special meeting reference to the Forsite leg or the Chappie Stagger, whatever case might be. Now, I don't know how long I can do that, I mean, just go up to it.
You're immobile, just traveling.
Just.
No, you just.
Does he need to do it each time, or can we just give him?
No, I think.
That's the end of the moment, I, I'll just wanna go, but sometime it'll be to happen at the last moment, I just wanted to.
Do we need a motion for that, Pam?
As long as he has it on a minutes term, that he'll be traveling on a bill to, on the court, and then we may just. The due date of each time.
Right.
Are we gonna get any kind of?
If he sends me an email, then I'll have.
If we're doing any kind of study, I got an issue with that. I'll be honest with you, we done spent over a million dollars, and we got nothing out of it, it's sitting up there at, uh, Jackie's office, if y'all wanna sit, where's Jackie?
I already gave it to him.
Jackie's office, if y'all wanna sit, so.
Let him stay here.
I, I gave it to him.
I know, it, I know things change, but it hasn't changed that much, just about another million dollar study.
But they have that, don't they, I gave it to him.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so we just.
That, and then you just turn.
You can just send me an email, then we'll have it on record.
Okay, Mr. Smith, uh, what you got?
Good morning, um, wanna kinda go over what we have on asphalt, dealing with the asphalt contractor, um. We have been testing with asphalt, Houston's engineering, um, has tested some roads as we're paving them, the asphalt contractor is out of compliance with his mix. So I wanna present where I'm at with that, I've shut the asphalt contractor down, um, he's been shut down for about a week and a half. Under the, understanding, he is, he told me he is supposed to have Burns, Cooley, and Dennis out of Jackson come to build him a new mix design that meets specifications. Like I told him, until his mix can pass, that we can't use him.
So we're not getting any pavement done?
Well, I thought.
Well, that's, that's where I'm going.
The second, the second bidder.
That's where I'm going, I spoke to our second vendor, we have another road blocking, he says, Tim, he says, we're backed up just like everybody else from weather, he said, but I will let you know something, the price I bid it on back then, we cannot honor it now. Because the inflation of petroleum and what's going on.
High inflation right now.
So I, I'd asked him, um, what he thought, he said, it's probably gonna go into the eighty dollar range.
Where are we at now?
Sixty-nine ninety-nine, and he had, the second vendor had bid at seven.
Roughly eleven dollar increase.
Right, at price, eleven or twelve dollars. We're, I have a half a road that's paved on Social Alexander Road. Okay, um.
There's a, there's a safety issue, it's too real, we need to try to get that.
Correct. Um, so I need to know what the will and pleasure of the board is gonna be with this contract. How long will Burns, Cooley, and Dennis come in to build him another mix? He said he's two or three down a, a line of waiting for them to come down.
Tim, we all know, what, what can we do about that as far?
They both have a contract, but if he's not complying with the contract.
We did?
Then you go to the next bidder, now the next bidder can't meet the thing. Didn't Mallett Brothers construction, I mean.
No, it was just them two.
Yeah.
In your opinion, Tim, if we go out, what, what, we can go out for bids, that contract can't, in your opinion, will we get bidders? Here's the prob- here's the prob-
I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, here's, here's the problem that, that we've been having. We, we issued bonds to pave roads, we've gotta get those roads paved within a period of, a certain period of time, that money needs to be spent, and we're getting tied up here because the contractor can't get to it for whatever reason.
That, that's not to cut you off, that's my concern as well, I'm holding two million dollars worth of POs right now for asphalt.
Ah, yeah.
And I'm holding another two hundred thousand on asphalt that we do with our machines, so we're almost two and a half million dollars, you know, that we're holding asphalt POs. Till we figure out, I need to go to the second bidder on plant pickup asphalt, where we can still run our spreaders and catch the little roads that we're catching with our spreaders, till we figure out.
Was there any kind of timeline on the contract, when he can get the mix right?
He had told me hopefully, uh, for last Friday, hasn't come in yet. He's supposed to notify me when they come, build the design and run it, because I'm gonna have our testing lab, their testing as well, before we can even set that mix.
Right. Tim, I ask a question for the person. I, I represented Mallett Brothers, so y'all know that I represent them, but last, I think they did bid, they were told that they're too far away, I asked them about that, and they said they can serve Harris County, they serve George County.
It was too far for our plant pickup, that's the only thing I denied them, I didn't need, our guys from Harris County, right all the way to negotiate Pascagoula picking up.
Tim, they, Tim, they, Tim, asphalt maintenance, temperature at this distance to eat, just to pave roads, Tim?
He said it could.
He said it could?
It can, if, if they run it a little hotter, asphalt, once it crusts up, does, builds itself like an oven. Um, the temperature is an issue though, if the plant's only running right about temperature, and then it has a long drive, you say, you know, which temperature, you wanna put that asphalt in three hundred degrees.
It is, yes.
So.
So what do you need from our standard?
I need to know, do, do we keep the contract canceled, or do we wait on it? What do I do?
My question is, if Mallett Brothers bid, they might be an alternative, if they did bid, even though you rejected them, because you're going down the line.
Right.
First bidder, second bidder, third bidder.
In the, in the bid book, it only shows the two.
But did they bid on asphalt in place?
Asphalt in place, and.
Only have to.
Uh, you don't have.
There's a penny of difference between that, asphalt in place and twenty-five cents difference in the pickup.
That's between the first two, yes.
Do we have the authority to move forward based on circumstances?
Might have to bid it again, is the problem.
That's, that's what we're looking at.
Well, then let's make a motion to rebid it, y'all wanna do that?
Do something quick.
I won't make that motion if necessary to rebid, let's get the, we got to start.
Do we have a second?
He's talking about two million dollars of POs, and I'm telling you, there's more coming.
Yeah, I, I know there is, and, you know, like I said, I have Hazard City out there right now, Social Alexander Road, that's one of the highest profile roads in Harris County.
All right, so we got a motion and a second to go out for rebid for the asphalt.
Right, and I'm able to go to the second bidder and pick up at the plant right now.
Okay.
And that's part of your motion surprise.
And fix all those problems at this time.
Then we'll just continue.
Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Oh, and I'm sorry, that's why I love text, Bobby Trussler just texted me and said, remember you were supposed to ask for the fees to be waived for the homeschoolers, that was the, the big issue.
Oh, yeah.
So, my apologies.
Freedom like a league.
Yeah, and again.
But the league's right.
Leagues pay, but, I don't know, you have to think about it, maybe we can show the leaders. Just remember the hundreds of thousands of dollars that homeschoolers save not being in our public school system.
That's the league's pay too, that's the problem.
But we have to follow the law.
And y'all wanna just look up the law on it?
Just by the twin say so.
Okay.
Yeah. But we need to like the schedule, when they gonna use that all?
Yeah, I think he knows that, yeah.
Yeah, he's probably.
Okay, I'll get with him on the schedule, and then we'll bring it up much later, so.
Okay. Ms. Tom, you got anything?
Not much, the board has any questions, everything, all litigation's going along pretty well.
Yeah.
Well, okay, we got, do have the trial coming up on six and eight, seven, eight and nine, or eight, nine, and ten, on the, uh, Veterans Avenue pier, just to catch up on.
Is, is that, that spring court?
No, no, that's a, a chance.
Jersey?
It's a go for it this time.
What's it for? They already went to.
I thought we.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I gave you the wrong name, Aldridge property, which is at the base of, like, one tiger.
Oh, that's different.
Okay.
I had the wrong one on the right.
The one you said, I thought.
Well, we already won that one, this one's got a little bit different issues in it, because it's a former oyster plant, so it makes a little bit easier.
Okay, is there any more business?
One more quick thing, just to, just to clarify some things, on the asphalt contract, we're gonna rebid it, that's for the remainder of this contract, so that it go back again.
It would have to be for the remainder of this contract.
That's number one, number two, if the contract, before we bid it out, and then the contractor that has it, forget his mix to your specification, what then what?
Then we won't bid it.
Okay.
Or accept it, yeah, I got it in the middle of it, and accept it, because one thing's running out there, yeah, the, the main thing is just getting.
You got some sort of.
Right.
But, Tim, you also, uh, they, they have not been needing to spend locations.
On what, for you?
In inventory.
What they're bidding on, and what they're bidding on is a standard nine-five millimeter mix, which is Mississippi Standard Road Bridge Construction Angle, it breaks it down, that's what they bid on. Their, their whole mix has been, and it's named in this paperwork, as a block mix, I know what the heck a block mix was, so I've asked, uh, engineers, I said, Tim, we don't have a clue what a block mix is. Said, best we can tell you is a contractor mix that is, that pretty much new private dry please. So, that's how I got with him, and I, I'd asked contractor, I said, can you tell me what block mix is? I said, you have some initials on here that was approved back in two thousand fifteen, he said, well, block mix is, you know, pretty much a standard mix. Said, listen, we don't need no more, no less from you, in what you're bidding, and your block mix does not meet standard nine-five mix.
When I vote on approval of a co- a, a bid, and, and I expect those specifications to be met, not substitute, not know what it is.
And just letting you know that the other vendor has been, you know, public records request, this issue of last year.
Yes.
It is.
Yes.
And so it's not just an issue of county freight, it has an issue of the other vendor's freight. There's actually an appeal pending, they didn't do anything with it, you know, appeal pending, where they offended the award of this contractor.
Have we been submitting to requests, to the vendor that's been requesting?
I assume y'all gave that last request, before we didn't have them, the last request, they asked, well, I assume you gave them.
Yeah, it's supposed to be six.
Oh, there's my.
I hadn't seen it for seven days.
Tomorrow's the deadline.
Well, we gotta give them an estimate for the seven days, not provided, but that's the, the cost of searching a cop, it's all gonna be done by tomorrow, to make sure that you.
Well, you got your, got your thing in the morning?
Yeah, so that's something I want to remind y'all now, nine thirty in the morning, excuse me, seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
I'll see y'all.
I'll be there at seven thirty.
Oh, God, seven thirty in the morning is the. Come watch a little sleep talk.
Long it'll be, babe.
Yeah, before we commit, how long do we gotta hang you that we're doing on?
Twenty minutes.
It's free food kit, come on.
Just going to bring. Tomorrow morning.
Stay at the camp.
Okay, anything else? And we'll entertain a motion to recess, we're gonna meet back here for a second on the twenty-second.
Motion, block, any block, motion.
Second.
Recede, and discuss, all those in favor signify by aye.
And Doc, I'm like, yeah.